On the FY 21 budget and regular meeting today, February 24th, 2020. May we stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance? It's King George Middle School here? And a moment of silence to follow.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. This time, I'd like to open a public hearing on the FY 21 budget. Ms. Rinco, do we have anybody that signed?
Yes, Madam Chair, just one.
Can I make a motion? To move the public hearing to after the recognition?
Sure.
Change to the agenda?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have moved the recognition before the public hearing. So for the first recognition, I'd like to recognize two ladies that are kind of in the background who we couldn't do what we're doing up here without them. They do a lot of hard work to keep us in order, keep us on task. And like I said, without them, our board would not be what we are today. So I'd like to thank, bring Teri Rinco and Ms. Cheryl Bushrod. Could you please come up? Would any of the board members like to make a comment?
I'd like to thank our clerks for the great job they do and the great job they do in preparation all year through. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to say that we'll get your picture after the meeting, since we haven't got it earlier.
I don't know, is somebody here to take pictures tonight? Okay, all right. So I want to apologize, I forgot to acknowledge the King George Middle School for doing our Pledge of Allegiance. If you guys could please come forward. Could you please state your name, what grade you're in?
My name is Zetonius Brown II. I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Hayden Callahan, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Gabriella Lewis, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Michaela Van Leidenham, and I'm in eighth grade.
Awesome. And do you guys want to explain to us your shirts?
So we are from the King George ROTC class from the middle school. As you all may have known, it is actually a new class this semester that Mrs. Dotridge has helped set up. And we would like to come talk to you guys about it. And I guess we'll start off with with me?
You.
Okay. So, um, so, so with the class, Monday and Friday, we have PT, which is physical training. Tuesday and Thursday, we have drill. And then Wednesday, we have leadership. And I got recommended to this class from a lot of my friends at the high school because this is actually an elective class at the high school, and a lot of my friends take it. But one of the main reasons I joined this was because, me personally, I grew up as a military child. I was born out on the base out in Yakuwara, Japan, moved to Hawaii, and then we were stationed here in King George. My dad served 20 years in the military and retired. But I do plan on joining the military when I grow up. And this class really helped me. And I was kind of expecting, like, kind of like, you know, that basic training vibe, and like, how, like, yeah, people yelling at you. But I mean, it was like, it wasn't like that. Like, you know, like, it was kind of like easier than that. It was a lot of fun. And I had a really great experience with my friends and everything like that. And I learned a lot from this. I really built self-confidence and confidence in my friends, too. Like, I have confidence that Gabby will come up here and do a really great speech for you guys. And I'll hand it off to Gabby.
So I'm here to talk about drill. Drill is fun. I enjoy it. When I get to the high school, I'm going to take ROTC and drill, and it like it helps like self-confidence, and it's like one team effort. So it's like, not everybody, you know, like, out there, it's like everybody is together, all learning one, as one group. Sergeant Major Callahan, we get, and Major Callahan are leaders, teachers for the classes. Yeah, drill team is exciting, it's fun, it's new, and everybody gets to learn new things, and I'm really enjoying it.
So PT is fun, and you get to get stronger. And I really like it because I'm very active in a lot of sports. And it's just a fun class.
Okay, so today I'll be talking about leadership. Leadership and NGRTC is a big part to me because it's about getting to know the people you're doing the drills with, or whatever you're doing that day, and building that bond with them. And NGRTC really gives you the opportunity to build like strength in your peers. And that's why I think this class is
So is there a quick little presentation you can do us on a drill that you practice? Not to put you on the spot or anything, but
Who's the leader?
I was going to say, would you introduce your leaders, please?
Yes, please.
Major Callahan, my dad, and then Sergeant Major Frank.
Thank you.
Do you guys have a rank structure at the middle school?
Excuse me, sir, what did you say?
Do you have a rank structure?
No, you'll get that in high school.
So when, can only eighth graders join it, or is it open to seventh graders also?
Only eighth graders this year.
Only eighth graders this year.
This is a new program that we've been active for, CTE program, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How many pushups can you do?
Right now, I can do about five, but that's because I just started.
How many can you do?
How about you, I'll challenge any one of them.
How many other students are in the class with you, with the four of you?
We have about 24 students right now in the class.
That's a good number.
Awesome.
Right now, as the class is, I mean, it was, it was kind of like Mrs. Dotridge was setting it up for us, and I'm actually really glad that we was able to bring it to the middle school. Right now, we don't have a uniforms or anything like that, because it's a new class, and they weren't able to set it up for us. But I really hope that you guys will consider that for next year, so when the, when some greatest, rising eighth graders will be able to take this class, enjoy it with their friends, and have uniforms and everything else that they need.
Not only that, it gives you great opportunity to learn respect.
Great.
I just want to say thank you to administration, Coach Yak, and both my majors today for this amazing opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
How much are uniforms?
Have to look into that.
Throw it out there.
Perhaps Mrs. Collins has already added it to the budget?
Is your name on the public comment? Okay, did the leaders want to say anything or add anything? Nope? Okay. Well, thank you guys very much, it was a pleasure. I look forward to seeing you guys out on the field for next year, and at the ball and everything, it'll be nice.
And a thank you to Mrs. Dotridge for sponsoring.
Okay, so now we'll go ahead and continue with the recognition. This month is Career and Technical Education Month.
Good morning, or good evening, what time of day is it? Good evening. Board members, I'm Christine Hill, Supervisor of Curriculum and Instruction, and I wanted to speak briefly about our CTE programs in King George. As you know, we have CTE programs at our middle school, as well as at our high school. And February is CTE Recognition Month. And our Governor Ralph Northam also has supported CTE with a proclamation, which I'll read in just a minute. Earlier this month, we had our Career and Technical Advisory and Committee meeting in collaboration with our King George Chamber of Commerce and our King George Builders Association, and also with our 300th Anniversary Committee. And so it was quite an event, and thank you to all of you that came out for that evening, I really appreciate it. It was quite the evening, we had lots of our county members there, and lots of our teachers were there, and we celebrated Career and Technical Education. It was an open-to-the-public event, and it gave an opportunity for our teachers and for our students, those that are involved with Career and Technical Education, student organizations, it gave them an opportunity to talk about their programs, as well as tours, we gave tours that evening. So it was a great evening. We try to do that annually, so if you missed it this year, we'll be doing it again in February of next year. We always celebrate in February. So I'm going to go ahead and read the Virginia Governor Ralph Northam proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflecting in the structure and nature of today's workplace, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education provides students with a career pathway for post-secondary education and workplace readiness, serves as the foundation of strong, well-educated workforce, which fosters productivity in business and industry, and contributes to Virginia's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education gives citizens experience and practical, meaningful applications of basic skills, including reading, writing, and mathematics, they are improving this quality of their education. And whereas career and technical education offers individuals lifelong opportunities to learn new skills that provide them with more career choices, expanding earning potential and greater job satisfaction. And whereas the cooperative and ever-increasing efforts between career and technical educators, administrators, and representatives of business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of our Commonwealth's economy by preparing citizens for careers in high demand, high wage, and highly technical-skilled areas in a global economy. And whereas this year's theme, Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow, demonstrates the crucial role that career and technical education plays in readying our students for successful careers. Now therefore, Ralph Northam, do hereby recognize February 2020 as Career and Technical Education Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. So I just wanted to thank you for your constant support for our programs. It takes a lot to provide career and technical education to our students, from having qualified instructors, to the types of materials that are needed, whether they are materials like, expendable materials like wood and nails and things like that, to actual materials, the actual tools, which need to be state-of-the-art to keep our students in a position that, where they're learning on the types of materials that are in the industry. So it's important to support, and we've gotten nothing but support from you, so we certainly appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Okay, next we have PTSA reflections.
Thank you, Chairwoman Prince Syria, Dr. Benson School Ward. I wanted to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Teri Rinco, I'm the Vice President of the King George County Council of PTAs. And the PTA Reflections Program, our annual program, encourages students to explore the arts and express themselves by providing positive recognition for their artistic efforts. Since it was founded in 1969, the Reflections Program has recognized millions of students who have benefited from this program. This year's theme was Look Within. It is my privilege at this time to recognize this year's honorees. And when you hear your name, please come on, come on up. In primary film production, we have first place Erin Baca. In primary photography, first place Lucy McCready. And Lucy was also first place in the district, Fredericksburg District.
Do you want to come up here and stand? There you go, just start to
Second place in intermediate photography, Ms. Kaitlin Myers. Intermediate photography, first place Kaylee Landrith, and also second place this year in Fredericksburg District. Correct myself, that is Cali Landrith. Second place in middle photography, Mr. Aiden Insana. First place in middle photography, and second place in the Fredericksburg District, Caleb Insana. In intermediate dance choreography, first place in our county council, and second place in the district, Kendall Fairley. In middle dance choreography, first place in the county, and first place in the Fredericksburg District, Ms. Lily Sanford. And moving right along, intermediate music composition, it's my honor to recognize, first in our county, and first in the Fredericksburg District, Ms. Emma Mendenhall. In the middle music composition, first place in the county, and first place in Fredericksburg District, Madison Jones. High school composition, I'm sorry, high school music composition, first place in the county, and first place in the Fredericksburg District, Megan Goodman. First place in the intermediate literature, and second place in the Fredericksburg District, Avery Nunes. In middle literature, second place, Emma Tully. Let's see here. Primary literature, first place in the county, and first place in Fredericksburg District, Lucy McCready. High school literature, first place in the county, and first place in the Fredericksburg District, Ms. Jaquia Reynolds. High school music composition, first place in the county, and first place in Fredericksburg District, Megan Goodman. First place middle literature, and first place in Fredericksburg District for Literature, Vivian Rinco. And last but not least, first place, Special Artist Category of Visual Arts, we'd like to start with Dylan Lamb, also first place in the Fredericksburg District. Primary Visual Arts, second place, Britton Watson. First place in the county for Primary Visual Arts, and second place in the Fredericksburg District, Mr. Levi Kreiser. Second place in the county Intermediate Visual Arts, Asuka Reed. First place Intermediate Visual Arts, and second place in the Fredericksburg District, Irisa Rummett. Excuse me, that is Irisa Rummett. Second place in middle school Visual Arts, Mr. Brian Hollis. First place, middle school Visual Arts, and first place in the Fredericksburg District, Ms. Hope Childers. High school Visual Arts, first place in the county, and first place in the district, Casey Kendall. All right. And first place at the primary level in the county, also first place in the Fredericksburg District, Mr. Aaron Baca. Congratulations to all of our county Reflections, county Reflections Reflections winners. Thank you. And I'll mention, all first place winners in the district level are now moving on to consideration at the state level. Congratulations, everyone.
Good job, guys, very good.
I'm delighted to see that we have lots of entries in different categories, that we haven't had entries in dance for years and years and years, so my congratulations to our dancers and to all of the arts. Thank you.
How many, how many schools are in the district?
Mr. Collins, there are over, I believe there's seven, seven different areas that are represented, counties and Fredericksburg City.
That's amazing, you had so many district folks place in the district's job.
Yep, yep. Congratulations to all.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public comment. Let's take a few seconds for the exit. Next up is a public hearing on the FY 21 budget. Public comment, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're going to do the public hearing first, and then we'll do the public employee comment. Okay, I'd like to call up Mary Ellen Arthurs.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ellen Arthurs, and I'm currently teaching fifth grade science at Potomac Elementary School. I've been teaching in the county since 1999, and this is my first public comment. On Saturday, I attended the Advancing Computer Science Education Consortium at the University of Mary Washington. Teachers from grades three through eight were invited to come and learn about the new Virginia Computer Science SOLs. We will then, in future sessions, work to develop curricular activities to share with teachers in our region and across the state to use in their classrooms. The computer science SOLs are not meant to be taught in isolation. The standards will be integrated across subject areas in math, science, reading, social studies, and STEM classes. Later, I invite you to review the standards that I gave you, which are just for fifth grade alone. You will see that they are quite rigorous and will require some teacher training. Just the subheadings alone, algorithms and programming, computing systems, cybersecurity, data and analysis, impacts of computing and networking, and the internet are enough to make most teachers squeamish. On Saturday, I was seated with fifth grade teachers from our region. We also had a computer scientist from Dogren assigned to our group. We started discussing the standards and how we could implement them immediately, and immediately I knew that I, as an elementary school teacher in King George County, was at a disadvantage. I was the only teacher in my group of 15 who did not have a set of computers in my classroom to use each and every day. My team of four teachers shared two classroom sets of computers, also known as cows. Some grade levels have five classes of teachers sharing two cows. I often can't do what I have planned because someone else is using the computers. Sometimes, we try to share the computers by shuffling them from classroom to classroom, 10 minutes here, 10 minutes there, but then we find that they're dropped or damaged in the transfer between classrooms. Since the computers are not housed in a particular Since the computers are not housed in a particular classroom, but in the hallway, they often get turned off overnight or are not put away properly. Without the proper equipment, our students will not advance at the rate of the other counties. They will have missed opportunities and they will leave our system unprepared for life. Now, I thought about alternate ways to get computers, like grants or PTA funding, and we've tried some of that, but I learned that computers not purchased through the county cannot be serviced and repaired in the same way. So what do we need? We need funding, funding for the computers that will be so vital to our students' futures. Now, I want to leave you with two important facts that I learned this weekend. I'm not sure if you know this, but Virginia has the largest number of computer science jobs in the entire United States. Washington DC is third and Maryland is fourth, so we need computers. And in 2018, Virginia universities graduated zero teachers who were highly qualified to teach computer science. We need funding for our classrooms, we need the classrooms to be one-to-one, just like the high school, and we need it now. If not, our students will be left behind. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Arthurs.
Thank you very much, Ms. Arthurs.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? For the budget? This is the budget hearing. Okay, so now we'll move on. So now we'd like to move on to public and employee comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have to make a public comment?
Thank you. My name's Mike Payne. I'm here to discuss Work Camp. I did send out an email today to members of the board and Dr. Benson and Dr. Boyd. My concern is, last year we had Work Camp here in King George. We had about 850 teens from the Arlington Diocese come down with about 500 or 400 to 500 adult volunteers. Each one of these teens, before they came down, fundraised for about $600 to $700 each. They used that money to help rebuild homes in the community. So it really was a big success last year. They had to use the high school because the high school was the only place big enough for this county and Colonial Beach is too small. But somebody on this board decided to tell them, no, don't come down this year. They usually do it in a three-year period, like they do it the first year, they get the logistics, and they do it for a couple more years. The diocese has determined, after a lot, they do a lot of work to figure out where the most need is. King George is the number one place. Last year, they did a lot of work redoing roofs, doing a bunch of works on homes, I can't think at the moment. I do have the stats if you want them and I can forward them to you. My concern is that we had one person from King George, who was an adult volunteer, was on a job site in King George this year, and she was able to help three people, or excuse me, four people fill applications out for this year, this coming year. And that's just one site. There's probably over half a million dollars worth of funds that these kids, that these high school teenagers fundraise to be able to do this for the year. Because somebody on the board, who the board somehow can't figure out who this person is, which is mind-blowing to me because somebody has been talking to the diocese, can't figure out who told them, no, don't come down this year. It's very frustrating and I take it to heart. My wife, who is here, she's actually the stakeholder for St. Anthony's. She's the one, she actually is a fourth grade teacher here in King George. She's a mother of five kids and you might as well add me there, too. And she does this as well, as something that's very important to her. So it makes her life very busy, but it's very important that we can help people in this community. So I'm here to ask, not to explain the whole thing, because what I would like to ask is that you read the email I sent today. It's pretty lengthy, but there's a lot of information in there and please read it. And the next thing I'd like to ask is that somebody just figure out who said no, so that we can talk to you guys and figure out, how do we get them back next year? They want to come back here next year, but they can't do it if you say no. I already talked to the board of supervisors and they were pretty upset about the fact that we weren't having it, but they also told me, just about two months ago, they also told me that it wasn't their decision, the decision's here in this board. There's going to be a lot of people this year, when it comes to summertime, who are going to ask, where are they at? Why is the diocese not here to fix our home, to make the home safer, warmer, and drier? Somebody has to be able to tell them that this school board turned them down, not the diocese.
Okay, can I leave your three minutes is up and?
Sure.
Ms. Payne, first of all, I'm very sorry. I sent your frustration, I can understand your frustration. I also do a lot of volunteer work here in the community and reach out to our community. You know, I'm not sure how this all came about, but this is not a board decision. This is more of a rental property decision that is directed through the school board office. So what we can do is we can look into it, we can have Dr. Benson look into it a little bit more, find out what the issues might have been. My gut kind of tells me that maybe the facility wasn't available on the date that you had requested.
Would that be on the school calendar?
Not all functions, no, are on the school calendar, because we do rent the facilities out, especially the high school is rented out on quite often, as a matter of fact. So my gut's telling me that it wasn't available, not that we didn't want you to come here, but you know, we can certainly look into that and find out what the issue is and then make sure that in next year, that there's, if that's not available, that we work with the Archdiocese for another weekend or we look for another facility. Is it, I just like to ask, is it too late to try to get you guys down here this year?
It is. They're going to Franklin County, and the sad thing is, is because they're going to Franklin County, Franklin County is, or excuse me, Frederick County, it's a smaller venue or place for them, so they're going to have to actually tell about 200 kids that they can't do it this year because it's not here. So I appreciate you looking into it. I would like to think, though, as a board, that if you can have 850 high school teens figure out how to raise this money to help these people in our community, that you guys can probably put your heads together and be leaders in this to make sure that we don't miss the ball on this again.
Well, and like I said, it's unfortunate, but I think that it was just a big misunderstanding. It's definitely not our intention to not allow our facilities for certain functions like this. I think everybody knows that King George is a very compassionate county. We have a lot of functions in this county, we reached out to our community. So we'll definitely have Dr. Benson look into it and see what we can find out.
Just, we don't normally comment on public comment. So I was the chairman of the board last year and did not come in front of this board. So this is the first time it's come in front of the board from a public comment. So this is my first time to hear it, other than through the email that I got today and read the entire thing.
I do appreciate that.
I just want to make sure it's clear that the board did not say no.
Okay. So as my wife said, she is the stakeholder for this, so her and I can work together with you guys to really try and get them to come back down next year. I'm hoping that the opportunity hasn't passed, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, moving on, changes to the agenda that we've already had.
No additional changes.
Thank you. All right, now we'd like to move on to the presentation for King George Middle School Character Education Video. Did we get the video working? We don't have the sound. I do believe Chad, you're the author of this video? That's how we're privileged that you're going to be able to narrate.
Good evening. My name is Chad Brown. For those who do not know me, I'm the King George Middle School representative. This evening, I'll be showing you one of the Leadership Class's Character Ed videos. The reason we create these videos is to show students the importance of various topics. The video I'll be showing you this evening is on bus etiquette. You'll be shown many issues that the leadership students have selected off the bus policy list. You'll see a right and a wrong behave, excuse me, sorry. You will see a right and a wrong way to behave. So in this part, I'm just opening up and explaining what this video is going to be about. Those are some of our fellow leadership students in the background. So this is how to not enter a bus. And this is how to enter a bus properly. Yes. Ms. Daltch is the driver. I know, me too. That's what this is about. So this is what you're not supposed to use technology for. Basically, I take a picture of my friend Lily and she doesn't want it to be posted, but I show it to everyone else and I post it, even though she said not to. And then I talk back to people. And this is if you take a picture of somebody and they don't want it to be posted or shown to others. This is all about what not, like don't stick your body out the window, basically. And she's talking back to the bus driver and the students when they tell her to get back in the bus. And this is just to keep your body out the window and... This is all about what not to you, like how to talk and stuff, like no cursing. Appropriate tone of volume on the bus. So we're all just talking among ourselves, half the kids aren't even talking. So this is us, like when there's, somebody wants to sit down and we're all just saying no to them.
Well, I guess so with that Virginia Tech shirt on. That wasn't appropriate, was it?
No, that wasn't, Mr. Collins.
Basically, we're playing music and half of us are dancing on the bus.
I don't think they got reflections. No, you can't, what I was going to say, I don't think they got a reflection.
This took us two takes to take this video, almost. And they're still throwing trash at each other.
The Virginia Tech guy is throwing trash.
Basically, Brendan throws trash on Kayden and Kayden takes it up to the front. So there, even though it wasn't his fault, he still cleaned it up.
Ms. Daltch, you can't take care of that bus?
What you guys didn't hear was pager pager.
She couldn't. Oh my, lose.
She's talking back. It's just an overview of us doing what you're supposed to do on the bus. So I'm asking Ms. Daltch if I could eat on the bus today and she tells me no. I'm asking her if she's okay and... This is just all leaving the bus. And then basically, I just wrap up the video and what it was meant to be. So after the students watch our harbor videos that we make, the teachers will ask them discussion questions that the leadership class creates. The reason we do the discussion questions after is so we can make sure the students understand what the purpose of the harbor is and so they're comprehending. For example, for this particular one, we have, one of our discussion questions was, do you understand that the rules on the bus are to keep you safe? And since we answer yes or no. We have, does your bus driver try and correct the behavior? And we have, what can you do to help improve the behavior on your bus? So we have those discussion questions. They, we really, we make these videos to really try to make our school society a better place for everyone. Does anyone have any questions about our videos? Thank you.
I would say, Chad, I'm sorry, I didn't get, we couldn't hear the narration because you look like quite the thespian, so I would have liked to see it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, we hope you enjoyed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion...
Do I have a second?
To approve the January 13, 2020 regular meeting and the January 27, 2020 regular meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Discussions items, we have the 2020 VSB A Business Honor Roll.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, each year, we look to recognize and we appreciate the opportunity to recognize locally up to three of our businesses that have helped support our schools. And we do this through the Virginia School Boards Association. So with your permission, I'm happy to canvas and solicit nominations from our schools and I'll bring three names to you. I think it's due in April, so... I think it's due in April, so next month I'll bring you those names for your consideration and approval, so we can recognize those businesses. Okay to do? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to move on to the FY '21 budget.
Thank you again. So just an update, and I'm going to pass, I have two documents that look very similar, but one has been updated in accordance with the amendments that the House of Delegates in Virginia have proposed. And the other has a revenue forecast based on what the Senate at the General Assembly has proposed, okay? So I'll send these down the dais one at a time and highlight for you the differences. First one is the Senate. You'll see up at the top of the title, you'll see the word Senate. The second one coming to you is the House of Delegates. So this is, this is part of the process, and I'll re-read this for our public. We build our first draft of the budget based on the governor's proposed budget, which is released in mid-December each year. Following that, each house has an opportunity to submit amendments that would impact, one way or the other, no doubt, the state funding that is afforded to each school division in Virginia. So this year, the process has remained. Both houses have proposed amendments. Typically, those amendments will be passed over to the opposite house. Each of those houses will then reject the budget of the other, but they will then convene a committee that will confer, and they will come to a compromise. In terms of a state budget, then both houses will pass, and the governor then eventually has the opportunity to review and sign. So we are kind of in that, at that point where we went through draft one, we knew what the revenue figure was for draft one. That budget had a local need, as far as funding locally, of one, approximately $1.2 million this year. In contrast, this year, the local support was $800 and some thousand dollars. So I'm happy to say that in both cases, the amount of local funding that would be needed to make our budget whole would be less. The House of Delegates, in the case of the House of Delegates, if that were to pass, which we know this is probably going to fall somewhere in between, the amount needed locally would be $868,946. Okay, so that's quite a reduction from the $1.2 million that we started with. And in the case of the Senate, if all of their amendments, or if their version was to be accepted, it would drop to $847,838, which is, which is right around what this year's local effort was, the amount that was appropriated locally. So in both cases, it's good news. We have to wait now until, again, the committee that they'll put together draws up the compromised budget, and then is considered by the governor to ultimately be approved. But I just wanted to give you an update based on what we learned Friday, what was released from DOE Friday as far as these CAC tools. We ran over the weekend the new numbers for your consideration, or your review, I guess. And then once we, you know, we can move forward then with a, with revision to the budget once we know where this settles, where the dust settles, so to speak. But I guess the point being is that it looks like it's favorable for the school division, every school division, to receive a little bit more in-state effort, which of course will have a corresponding reduction in terms of the local effort needed to make budgets whole. Any questions about that? I hope I explained that. I know it's a complicated process, but that's, that's where we are right now.
Do we know when that timeframe will be?
I don't. I think within the next two to three weeks, usually early March, we will have, you know, what the compromised budget is, and then a week or so later, usually the, it's signed by the governor. But this is a long session this year. This year's General Assembly is a long session, so it'll probably be early March when we know that.
Ms. Gonzalez, is there any discussion? Do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Ms. Hawk? Ms. Tolliver? Mr. Collins?
Nope.
I guess we're just in the holding mode until we get affirmation from the state as to what our funding will be.
We are, but again, it's good news. I think that it's positive news that the burden locally, it seems, will be lifted a little bit.
So, Dr. Benson, does that mean that we, we had talked about having a work session, but I think that our next board meeting is March 9th, and at that point in time, we should have resolution? And so maybe at that point, we can discuss if we need a further work session?
I think that's a good plan, is to, is to allow us to put it on for action with any updates for your March 9th meeting. And then you, each year, you meet jointly with the Board of Supervisors to present the school board's proposed budget for the next fiscal year for their consideration. So I'll be working with Dr. Young at the county to try to identify a date that they want to meet or establish that meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
So there's no changes to the proposed budget, as was pre-said in at the last meeting?
That's what I'm hearing, that as far as the expenditure side, the adjustment would be on the revenue side, of course.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the information items. And we have committee reports. Ms. Gonzalez, do you have a committee report?
Yes, I do. So I guess, can I, like, thank members that presented earlier? Yes, okay. Anyway, so I guess first of all, thank you, Ms. Arthur, for coming and presenting your information on the computer science stuff. All of this is very compelling information. So thank you, I look forward to reading the material that you provided. And I was going to say, thank you to Mr. Payne and his wife, but they left. But for the discussion on the work camp, Chad, good job with the video. Like I said, you clearly have a career in theater, perhaps, if you're, you know, inclined to do that. I also, so I attended the celebration of the CTE evening on February 10th, so I wanted to say good work, Mrs. Hill, collaborating with everyone. That was an excellent event. Clearly, a lot of work went into that, and I enjoyed the tour of the high school. I also, so I attended the Title I Advisory Committee meeting on February 5th. So they presented current Title I data, which, so I learned a lot about this since this was new to me. Only elementary schools are involved with the program. And the data presented included the number of students at each school, which are identified for Title I services, and also the percentages of students that receive free and reduced lunches, which I learned are not one of the same. So King George Elementary will be moving to a school-wide Title I program in the fall of 2020. So this doesn't change the amount of funding we receive, but it will make all students in the school eligible for Title I services. Ultimately, it's more flexible, it allows more to be done with the funding. And then also learned that the schools, any other schools can also apply for waivers to move to school-wide programs if they're, if they have, if their percentage of free and reduced lunches is below 40%. So King George, at this point in time, was the only one above 40%, if I recall correctly, which is why they qualify. But it was also noted that schools, larger divisions which have submitted for waivers have typically been approved, although no large divisions seem to have all schools included in the program. So it's undecided, I guess, at this point in time. If Potomac and Steelston were also going to be considered for waivers, but for now, they're going to roll it out at King George and see how that goes. And then they also presented the Title I family survey results. So they, they survey parents, the family members of students that receive Title I services to find out how they, their understanding of the program, or how they feel that it helps their students. There was very good survey participation, I would say, amongst participating families. I think they've done a really good job getting them out there, into the, to families, I mean, getting feedback. And so most of the comments were very, were very positive, and it did appear that satisfaction and understanding of the program has really trended upward from years past. So that was all, I think, very good information. So I look forward to learning more about that whole process as we move forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. So we typically have our committee reports, and then we'll have our board comments. And you kind of seem to, that's okay, you kind of seem to kind of merge them together. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct. And so what I would like to propose is that we go ahead and continue along that path. So, Ms. Hawk, if you wanted to give your committee reports and your board comments at this time?
Well, I'll be short and sweet with, with both. The Commonwealth, I'm sorry, I'm switching, Governor Schools this year. The Chesapeake Bay Governor's School meeting from last week was postponed due to weather concerns, so it is to be scheduled for this Thursday night. I'm hoping to attend. And looking forward to being part of that Governor's School again. It is a very exciting group to be associated with, as is Commonwealth. And I think we're so fortunate to have our students be available to both Governor Schools. We need to let parents and students know at the elementary level that those options are available for them when they get to high school. Because I, we, we have these opportunities that we, we need to encourage participation. And I don't have any other board comments except to say thank you very much to Ms. Arthur for coming forward about this issue, and it's a huge concern. We'll have some more questions for Dr. Benson about it during the week, I'm sure. And again, it's awesome that our reflection...